I will call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order on Monday, May 25th, 2023 at 7 o'clock PM in Millville. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, since we have new people, and I think we should do this every night anyway, we'll do introductions. So Roland, stay with you.
Roland Barrett.
Richard Bremelst.
Matthew Maile.
Jennifer Gill.
Peter Caruso, Town Administrator.
Great, okay. So new business. So we have the appointment of Jonathan Schuman as a part-time police officer through June 30th, 2024. So Chief Coop and Jonathan, if you want to come up to the table, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm bringing before you Jonathan Schuman tonight for a part-time police officer appointment. He's a, he's a local kid, grew up in Canton, attended the local schools. He's living in Attleboro now. He was a part-time police academy graduate and worked for the Georgetown Homes as a special police officer in Boston. So he got exposed to some stuff out there, different things. It's community policing and they assist Boston trying to keep the place quiet. He was promoted to the rank sergeant. He was able to supervise four officers. Community policing was the utmost importance of his time at Georgetown. So kind of like we deal with it here, you know? So, and he's got quite a few different events he ran over there. He also worked as an auxiliary police officer for the town of Milford, involved in large events and celebrations over there. In 2020, since 2020, he's been a telecommunications dispatcher for their town. So during his time that he's worked with them, he felt like, you know, he learned that he wanted to be in a small-time environment similar to us from his experiences between all of those different situations he worked in. So if you have any questions for him, I'll turn them over to you now.
Okay. Anyone have any questions before we get started?
Sounds like the chief's got it pretty well covered. Attleboro's not too far, so.
No.
About 20 minutes.
Yep. It wasn't that bad coming here today, right down 146, so.
And you're, you're looking to join part-time, so be filling, what shift roughly, Coop, do we know?
Some six to twos and midnight to eights.
So not terrible.
No.
Hope to get on full-time?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. That is the goal. It is to be full-time here.
Okay, nice.
I'm looking forward to bringing my knowledge and excitement to the town and, and working with the residents again and just happy to be here, really am. And I'm glad that you guys have given me the opportunity to, to do that, so. I really am thankful. So thank you all.
Okay. Is there anything in the letter or that Chief Coop didn't say that you would like to share with us?
No, I mean, outside of, I'm just very excited to work in this town and work with the residents through their issues and, you know, I'm excited to have some other ideas and, and stuff like that. So later day, we'll try to figure that all out. And I am car seat certified. I, you know, I have some other treats to bring to the table, so I'm very excited.
Definitely a lot more community policing here in this community than I think enforcement.
Enforcement was roughly right around the same size, about 3,500 people.
Yeah.
So it's nice to come back to something.
Yeah, yeah. What do we have here, Peter? 3,500?
3,200.
3,200?
Yeah.
I was saying, I think we're that big. Was it four and a half square miles?
Five square miles.
Five square miles.
Yeah.
It was around, around 1900 or 2000 when I built my house.
Is that right? So a lot of people moved in.
Everybody moved in after Roland.
That's right. They're trendsetter, Roland.
I couldn't resist. Right from Milford, they all followed.
All right, um, so looking for a motion? I know Andrew usually does this, so someone's going to need to take their role.
I usually butcher names, so I'll let Roland take it back.
I motion to appoint Jonathan Schuman to the Millville Police Department part-time through June 30th of 2024.
And I'll second.
Thank you, Richard.
Each two.
He did beat you, like right on top of it.
He was thinking it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Last chance to escape. All right, aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
And Jennifer is aye. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
What's that bumping into?
Hey, you know, I'm just, I'm magnetic, you know, what can I say?
You just want the chair.
Yeah, how dare you steal my chair? That's okay.
We can switch. We can switch every agenda item. Do musical chairs.
Jen, maybe?
Camera shy.
Yeah, it's a pretty big moment. Oh, look at that.
Look at the smile on his face.
We don't do badge pinning ceremonies.
We did. When the, we absolutely did with the, you weren't here.
I wasn't here? If I came here and I just ruined everything?
So we did it with, when we did acting chief, we do it for chief.
I saw that, yes. So promotions, right?
Yeah.
Excitement just spilling out of the chief.
That's right. This is how he looks when he's excited and this is how he looks when he's bad. Thank you. Okay.
Bell check. Yep.
See, Bell check, talking about Kelsey and Taylor Swift. That was amazing.
Got to get back to work.
All right. So library toll permit approval for October 21st, 2023. Oh, and just, you're all welcome to stay, but if you want to go, you can, because the rest is going to be. Okay.
But we won't be insulted. It happens all the time.
Thanks for coming.
Nice to meet all of you. See you around the campus. See you around the campus, thank you. What a big audience.
Okay, so I have the permits, library toll day permit, so.
So we don't have the signatures yet. Those are in process from the two chiefs and the highway.
Okay.
We'll be getting those before the time of the event, so I would ask you to approve it subject to those approvals.
We'll sign off on it tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you want a motion?
Yes, please.
I motion, I motion to approve the Millville Free Public Library under the direction of Colleen Curris on October 21st, 2023, and a rain date of October 28th, 2023, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM for a toll day at the intersection of Central and Main, and provided all other departments are signed off.
Seconded. I'm not letting you have it, you know?
Any further discussion?
Turn on that.
Yeah, you're good. Two and O, buddy. Two and O.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. Okay. Do we, do you want me to sign this one?
Yes, that'd be great. And we'll just have the, we'll attach the approval.
Okay. All right. So next is appointment of a selectman as a zoning board member associate. So there's a few emails here. So Peter, you want to?
Yep, just so in, in there though, we've learned contrary to prior belief by town council that the zoning board really needs a three-member board, which could be one, one or more members could be associate member.
Oh, that's my scratch. They're signing it.
Just borrow mine.
Okay. In order for them to do various hearings and things like that, take actions on those sorts of things. So they're at a, they're a two-member board.
Yeah.
As you may recall, back in April-ish, May, end of March, the current second member of the board, Joanne Mulvey, was appointed through the end of October. It was a sort of a short-term appointment, okay? And so, um, having discovered just last week after some town council re-review of the matter, they really need to have a three-member board to take actions on variance, public hearings and things like that. They don't issue special permits. The planning board does, but for them to really take action, they need a third member. And so that's what we came forward when we set up this agenda last week for tonight, was the consideration of one of you stepping up to be a fill-in associate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. As of this morning, and you've been handed out an email exchange I had with someone who has put forward an interest to become appointed as a zoning member, zoning board member, Jason Zalonis, and I apologize if I'm not saying his name correctly, but I understand Jason's here this evening. So, and you, the urgency of this is we have a few weeks before the zoning board has to take another action which would require a three-member board.
Okay.
One of whom could be an associate member, as I said. So you might, you don't necessarily need to do anything tonight, but you really need to think about your involvement, anyone who might want to step up. And one or more of you are already quite engaged in a variety of, I think you're all engaged in other committees, quite frankly, if I think of it, right? Except perhaps Andrew, who's not here tonight, right?
And so we should obviously nominate him.
There you go.
You didn't show up.
Sorry, Andrew, I didn't mean to do that.
You didn't show up.
Then he got a resignation.
Yeah, that's right. But, but so you're all busy and the zoning board meets infrequently and it usually is people who are seeking variances or appealing a building commissioner decision on some zoning enforcement, okay?
Just like conservation.
That's right. Yeah, yeah. But, but when they meet, you know, it's technical stuff. You have to, you know, read plans and submittals and so forth. So again, you don't have to take action specifically tonight, particularly where you have a meeting a week from tonight.
But we could.
Right? But you could. That's correct.
And we have somebody here, so.
That's correct. So you, you do whatever, so that's the background on that.
Okay, so I think one, I think we should definitely speak with Jason since she's, since he's here. But the chair, Tom Mulvey, hasn't responded, so we don't have his kind of like way in, which I would, so I think we should talk to him too. But I think we should talk with Jason tonight.
Yeah.
And then we can get an email from, because it's only, we're having another meeting a week from tonight.
Yeah.
So we can appoint him in a week. And I don't think they have anything pressing over the next seven days.
No.
So I just would like Tom to be like, yeah, sounds good.
So just a reminder, we did kind of step on council on aging when we nominated somebody for that board.
So yes, we did.
So I think the point he's making is we don't really need his, we like it.
No, we don't, but I.
I think in good practice, just to be consistent, we should just wait. And we're having a meeting next week and we're not having anything, you know, imposing.
In the meantime, so Jason, do you want to come up to the table? Just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested and what made you decide to step up for a zoning board of appeals? It's not exactly a mainstream board. Like I didn't know this existed until like on the board selection.
I've lived here most of my life.
Oh.
I have two kids, a wife, and I grew up, I don't know how to, I grew up in a situation where I wasn't really allowed to get involved with politics. In the past four years, I have been doing lots of research on politics and found that piqued my interest, because I want to know what's going on in the world. I'm not running for president, but I want to do something for my community or be a part of my community more than just living here and going to work and coming home. If there's anything I can do to help move the community forward in a positive manner, then that's what I want to do.
Great. Okay, anyone else have any?
That's for much more than that.
Yeah.
Satisfies the bill. That's why I got involved.
Actually, a little bit more. So I want to be a positive role for my kids in that manner, so that they see their father putting himself out there, you know? So if a father or a mother is a positive role and putting themselves in like a situation that they've never been in, it kind of builds the kids up and they're like, oh, I want to put myself in places. So, yeah, just to add to that.
True.
Okay.
Aye.
Any other questions?
They pretty well takes care of it. So what do we think?
I would prefer to wait until Tom. I'm not saying that. Let's just consult with the chair.
Chair?
I mean, we could, we could appoint pending Tom's input.
I defer to you on that situation.
He would hate to like pull it and pull it back. That seems mean to Jason.
I'm not worried. At least I'm here and I try.
Yeah.
So what's the appointment till what, July 1st or June 30th?
So you'll go through June 30th, 2024. That's correct, right?
See, he's.
And I would suggest that he be appointed as, if you were to appoint him, it would be as an associate member.
Yep.
And if you did that, and Tom thought that was great, and I don't know why he necessarily wouldn't, right? But Tom might also still want, there still may be a need for one of you, right? To be an associate member. And what I don't know is whether they can function with two associate members and one member of the chair, okay? So it might be, you might revisit that at some point. I'll revisit that with council in terms of, depending on what you do tonight and what might happen next Monday. I, I think next Monday is when you would decide on yourselves, right? And would have hopefully the opportunity of Andrew. But, you know, and, and I would argue, other than for Andrew's sake, if you deferred on, on this right now, you know, Jason doesn't necessarily have to be here next Monday.
No, he would not need to be, in my opinion. Since you're already spoke with him.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
He can.
Always welcome, yeah.
Everyone is always welcome at board of select meetings. Every single week.
Please come.
But yeah, I, I agree that we've seen him, spoken to him.
I mean, I could, I could be an associate.
You want to be on three boards, Roland? Wow.
Sounds like somebody's ambitious.
It's Mr. Millville.
I know, Mr. Millville.
No, I think that's good. So here's what I would recommend then, is in particular for Jason, whether he could be appointed as a, if you say I'll be the associate,
Yep.
then whether you decide or not to move favorably on Jason, that he be the member, right?
Right, right.
And so I just want to confirm that between now and then in terms of, you know, just talking through it with Tom, as well as a little council and how that plays out.
That sounds like a good idea. Let's see who's best for each role, since there are different roles. And then we can do the appointments next week. Okay. What's the difference to associate member and member?
Well, the associate member only gets to vote if there's a need for a vote and, and you know, it isn't a full, you know.
If there's an even number of members present and it's a tie vote, then the associate.
They can step in as well, yeah.
Okay.
But in this situation, let's say we were down to where current member two does roll off at the end of October, it's again a three, a functioning three-member board when it comes time to take votes, but otherwise you're still not an official, you're an associate member.
Okay.
Which I don't really know what the lesser responsibility is that I have to.
And that would be fair anyways as a board of select member. I mean, you really want more of an advisory role than you really want to.
I think so too.
You don't really want to have your fingerprints all over it. It's not good.
No, I agree.
Yeah.
So if you can just check my.
Yeah, so I'll confirm with Tom and if you, and we'll have that on next week's agenda.
I'll be the associate if, but you're going to check first?
Yeah.
No, I, yeah, I just want to make sure the configuration is what I described. And I don't, I'd be surprised if it wasn't as described.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Jason, for a point next week.
Cool. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
I'll come.
Oh, sure. That'd be great.
Just for the heck of it.
All right, sure.
All right, thank you.
We can always use an audience. Okay, so great. Um, all right, so special town meeting, considering some potential warrant articles. So I have the feasibility study.
Yeah, so in there, if I could.
Yeah.
This is just informa, it's a heads-up of what we have so far in the hopper as probable warrant article topics, right? So one, of course, is the feasibility study, and I encourage you to read that as well as the transmittal that I sent you, okay? Then there's an article that I call Board of Health Signatory Authority. There's the, is the email exchange, but the warrant article will be having, and I need council to word it, where you have a board of health member who also functions as a board of health agent. And truly to do that, you need a town meeting approval. So this is an administrative function of this particular warrant article, just to ensure that all the i's are dotted, t's crossed on that matter. There are three articles in this that you can review from the planning board, and so you may want to have, you know, the planner come in and, and explain these. Dylan, and I'm sure Dylan would be very happy to do that, does a great job and did the drafting of all of these, okay? And then there's also in there related to a questionable year, appropriate year of some repairs to a fire truck, okay? And so my review of warrants, I had questioned, this should really be a fiscal 23. It was posted in fiscal 24. Now we're at this time of year. I don't know yet what the mechanics are, but it might be a mechanic of a, some form of a warrant article to put it back in fiscal 23, which I believe is the more appropriate place. But we know there's no budget money available then, so it might take voters at a town meeting to approve this. And I think it's better in last year where true, the repairs were done, invoice was July 1st, but the repairs were really done in May, you see? So it's a little bit of what's, I used to be a CPA, I trained in accounting, you know, you always, they kind of, a practice of matching. You match the period in which you record something with the period in which those goods or services took place. And so here, the services took place in fiscal 23, so the accountant in me says it belongs in fiscal 23. How to get it back into 23, especially where that particular budget had nothing remaining? You remember that was one of the budgets for which you had year-end transfers to supplement it. So again, the mechanics and whether it's a town meeting thing. So I only put that in here as a possible warrant article and between, you know, hopefully next week, you'll actually see a first draft of the warrant, which has the typical things plus the specific ones in here and maybe one on this moving the money back. There will also be, you know, bills of a prior year for certain things. In particular, we've talked about MES water. I have a pretty good handle on what that's going to become.
What was the date of that invoice?
So it's July 1st.
The truck invoice?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the work was done in May. You know, we took delivery.
Work in May and then bill.
Right. Why did it take, why did it take so long to get it into our hands?
The bill?
Yeah.
That is kind of weird.
Well, it came, it was processed on a warrant on July 18th. And the invoice was, it was invoiced.
Yeah.
July 1st. Why did we not get it till July 1st?
Yeah.
I'm not gonna, I don't, I would only speculate.
Yeah, because you can see right here, so ready, May 8th, delivery date, June 9th.
I mean, was the truck picked up prior to that date? I mean, I.
It was picked up, uh, June 3rd, June, June 9th, rather, yeah.
So you can, so if you look at these dates carefully, actually, so it says, ready, 08, May 23, delivery date, 09, June 03.
Yeah.
That's not true. And then invoice date, 01, July 23. So there was just some.
So, yeah, I can't, I don't know whether somebody said, let's invoice it July 1st, so we call it a fiscal 24. But I can pretty much assure you that there will be repairs, challenges in fiscal 24 for vehicles in the.
Yeah.
Right?
Can we get them to, to put the right date on the invoice and ask them to send it again? Like, is that possible or would that be breaking some sort of rules?
No, I mean, this seems pretty straightforward. I mean, this truck was fixed and ready in May, May 8th.
Yeah.
And it was invoiced July 1st, but it seemed like we left the truck there for.
Yeah, so here's how I'll answer your real question, because I know what you're.
And I'm not trying.
Exactly what you're.
You know what I'm getting at.
The person who dealt with the repairs most directly was the deputy chief, Ricard. So let's, we can blame him. No, just kidding. You know, you'll blame me when I'm long gone, right, for things?
No, I'm not looking to blame. Okay, so with that being out of the picture, all right, so you close the books, what, 15 days after July 1st?
Yeah, so I don't know that I can get it posted back. I have a question for the accountant, and I'm meeting with the town accountant and the auditors tomorrow on separate matters, but this will be on the table for discussion tomorrow afternoon.
I'm going to say, they're probably not going to want to do that, especially with the state. I mean, because they have some strict guidelines.
In terms of how you close it, that's why I'm saying it's.
Defining cash and things of that nature.
That's correct, yes. So that's why I'm saying, is there a vehicle to do it through a town meeting? Because I don't believe it's something you can post backwards, right? You have a certain, by the end of July, your fiscal year accounting is essentially done.
And we're long past our 30-day guarantee of paying this invoice.
Yeah, so it was paid. It's already been paid.
Well, it has been paid.
Yes, yes.
You just want to post the transaction in 23 instead of 24.
Yeah, I'm not, it's not a question of whether it can be paid or should be paid. It's a question of what period it belongs to and how to mechanically get it in that period.
Well, all right. I think you're pretty well stuck, but have at it.
Yeah, and I may come with that solution as there's really, it's a 24 event.
Yep.
Okay, so that's just, so that's all I really know, other than the standard warrant article types of things that we're going to do.
And I don't want to rake anybody over the cold. Just real quick, I mean, I kind of go over this invoice before, and there's, there's a lot of work done here. I mean, this is a substantial bill. You know, you're talking about $15,000 worth of work.
Yeah.
Steering system, box leak and electrical, you know, oil flush. It's like, you know, PTO issues and then fabrication with the PTO, like, so, I mean, I don't, I don't expect you to answer this question, but I mean, I guess officially, like, what happened to this truck to all of a sudden warrant 15 grand worth of work like that, you know?
Yeah, I don't know what precipitated, like what went down, and then they said, well, let's deal with all the other issues that we've sort of known about, or if that is the case even, right?
I feel like if Andrew was here, he'd be asking the same question, so.
But, but so here, here's the only other thing I'll say. The other truck had, two years ago, had $28,000 worth of repairs. And these are old trucks, and if you asked any, you know, the fire department, I'm sure in their long-term capital plan keeps putting down replacement truck.
This is an 03. That was going to be one of my other questions that you're not going to be able to answer, is what's the book value of this truck? And what's replacement cost?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Replacement cost is going to be 800 grand. They're big trucks.
Was it the ladder truck?
It's either the ladder or the, you know, I don't know which unit it was, but there's, there's Truck 75 and Truck 2, you know?
Yeah.
One's the ladder, one's the pumper.
Yeah, I mean, because we all, we do have options besides buying new. I'm just asking.
Yes.
But where I'm going with that is typically when you start to have repairs that exceed, and I'm not, I don't know what 15 grand is in comparison to the value of the truck, but once you start to get to that 75%.
Procurement issues and all that.
Once you get to 75% of the threshold, the replacement cost, you start to be borderline total loss, even though it's not in an accident, but still technically you could wind up with union issues or life and safety issues. That's why I'm kind of asking what the value is and what the replacement cost is.
I mean, I don't think it's, I don't think it's 14,000, 70% of the cost.
20-year-old truck depends on what the actual value of the truck is now, but if it exceeds or meets the 75% threshold, then legally you may have a total loss.
Do we have like a repair history of like regular service?
I'm sure we do. I don't, you know, I don't have that. I'm sure we can find, I'm sure we could have the chief in and, you know, explain, you know, it's, like when capital meets for next annual town meeting, we'll have had the fire department and to talk about their capital needs, right? And these would be, their vehicle needs are something that they're starting to talk about. And, and so that also is a time for the town to think about what its long-term game plan is on how it serves the public best in that situation, right? Whether you're, you're working with another community, regionalizing some more than you currently are, mutual aid more than you are and so forth. And I'm not saying anything either way. It's just, that's the opportunity for you to.
I didn't expect you to have the answers, but in a situation like this, typically, you know, I would send this truck out or have an appraiser do an onsite evaluation and then come up with a total value.
So I'm not familiar with that.
The only reason why I'm bringing that up, because then it'd become a life safety issue with the union in the event that somebody gets injured, the truck doesn't work, the town's liable. That's the reason why I'm asking that question, because it is a big nut. It's a 20-year-old truck, 22.
Yeah, and I don't, you know, I don't recall the equipment being part of negotiations with the union when there was one member of the union. Now there will be two members. There are two members of the union. And we're going to be up in about a year or so for the fire department, so. And we're gonna be up in about a year or so for the fire department, so.
I'll just food for thought.
That's very good, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else on the warrant articles? So I think we're gonna have the school come to the next building, right?
That's correct, yes.
To go over the feasibility study, because there are a couple of questions I have. And I'm gonna send an email to Dr. DeFaco and Aaron Vernaco, so they're prepared. But I was curious as what the projected square feet of the finished building would be. I want to make sure that's included in here to consider other building options, because this only talks about repairing the high school. And I'll make sure we look at different configurations, like, I don't know, MES in the middle school or MES the complex in the middle school or the, you know, just make sure we're looking at what's the best way to move forward. And I did do a little bit of research, because I remember Senator Fatman told me that Uxbridge did a new high school in 2010. And so they got a brand-new 10,000-square-foot high school for 45 million in 2010. And there, from the MSBA, they got 22 million. So that was 13 years ago, I don't know.
Commodities have doubled, construction has doubled.
So 90 million, you think?
To 100.
To 100?
Yeah, 100, at least 100.
All right. That's a lot.
And just FYI, food for thought. BBT was built in the late 1960s. Look at it.
Yeah, that's what Peter said, actually.
Luther High School was built in the late 1960s, look at it.
That's what Peter said, because we did a tour of BBT. So we went to, the Boris Selectman was invited to their, like, Millville freshman night. I don't know if it's freshman for everybody or just for Millville, but we, Roland and I went and we got a tour. And we saw where his son is a teacher, the labs, I mean, it's quite a nice building.
And granted, they did the huge addition slash remodel in 2000. They didn't move to a new location. And we saved a lot of money by doing that.
I think that's what they're thinking here, though, is that, I don't know about a renovation, they're thinking about a new wing.
But where we're only 40% capacity right now.
Yeah.
What are we looking to enlarge for?
I don't know, that might be another question that we ask them.
Just, I'm just trying to think common sense.
No, you're, that's an excellent question, Roland.
I'm all for education. I, a lot of my family teaches.
Yep.
And, you know.
Too many seats isn't a good thing.
Yeah, okay.
Right-size, I think that's the term, right?
Yeah, are we right-sizing the building?
The business world won't put up a factory or office complex twice of what they need.
So we'll have the finance committees planning to be here next Monday night. And capital, the members have been notified to be here, and I will post a meeting for capital. We won't vote for a new capital leadership at that meeting, but hopefully we will at an upcoming one. But that could, so people could, so at least this BMR leadership won't have to show up at multiple meetings, right? And go through this. And folks can ask their questions and whatnot.
Okay. All right, so I'll make sure that I send those questions, so they can, you know, I don't like to support things on people. Try not to anyway. Okay. Anything else on any of the other potential warrant articles? Oh, I did actually one thing, because I noticed that for planning, there were some that were to change bylaws. Bylaw updates?
Yeah.
And at the survey that we did, I don't want to say when we did it. We, we did ask specifically if they would like to have the special town meeting to be like, to move things faster and do things like bylaw meeting changes? Or would they, would the townspeople like to have the special town meeting be for like one-offs? So things like the feasibility study, like things that are a little bit more urgent? And keep all bylaw changes and kind of other things like that at the annual town meeting? And they voted for that scenario, that they want to bylaw changes to be at the annual town meeting. And I can dig up the results of the survey. Actually, Peter has them all in his office, if you would like to look at them. The green ones, that, well, they're somewhere in the town hall.
They're somewhere there, yeah.
I brought them all back. And then, but I do have a spreadsheet and I can send it to you of all the questions and things like that, so you can see the answers. So if we did have those changes, we would be going against the survey.
Speaking of warrant articles, water. Do we have a, are we going to look for water, funding for water at that town?
No.
We're not looking at tax warrant then?
No, I think we're gonna, well, unless you want to, right? If you think it's wise, but I think you're, we're looking for Mass DEP to pony up some money. We're looking to do a, well, you'll see when we get the MES water and there's a MO.
Well, I've touched upon it now because of the warrant articles. I didn't know if that was something that was going to come up, if you were going to ask, okay.
No, no, but there is one other warrant article that will be in there, which is correction or rewording of a warrant article from last town meeting. It turned out wasn't, it was crafted by council for allowing the treasurer-collector to do deals with people, to extend deals and so forth with people. So the wording was not accepted by the state, so it has to be revised.
Okay.
Council will fix that. So that's, again, an administrative thing.
Yeah, to keep the town moving, that's not like something we need to do.
Yes, yes. As far as the planning, that's your call, right? You, but it still probably behooves you to-
I think we should invite certainly the planning board and then, you know, just some, you know, these are the results of the survey. I'm not, you know, why do we did the survey if we're not gonna really listen? I'm not really comfortable, but if everyone else feels differently, I am only one vote of five, so, okay.
And the, and the warrant closes Wednesday at 5:00 PM. You guys made that the 27th is the closing date of the warrant. So if somebody decided they wanted to submit something after that date, it would only be allowed if you opened it and closed it, you know, specifically, right? And the only other one would be maybe some budget adjustments. For example, there might, yes, if that's what, if that's what you're asking about the water. Not a capital thing, but a-
Operating?
Operating, yes, so that, that will likely be in there, yes. If that's what you're asking, yes.
Okay.
And so I would imagine you have an ask in your mind roughly?
It's probably another 60 beans, you know? 60,000.
For the current fiscal year?
Yes.
So I-
Something on that order of magnitude, plus or minus.
Pretty well expended for the current fiscal year with the issue?
We're moving along on it pretty well for the fiscal year, that's correct.
So we're almost expended?
No, I, I'm gonna say we're closing in on half of it.
Okay.
But I don't, but we'll get to MES water. I don't anticipate the cost to be as high going forward.
Yeah.
But I, but what do I know?
I think that should be something that the board should consider looking at as we move forward. Do we double down on the well issue or we circle back and look at trucking in potable water? Is it cheaper?
So we're gonna talk about MES water when you might want to.
Why we, yeah, well.
Just because I'm talking about budget issues.
Yep, no, keep it, definitely will, we will talk about that. Okay, public safety terms. So we have something from Diane, who's recommending that we have set time limits and we stagger them, since this is a seven-member board, so. Peter, anything else to add?
Well, so what I would suggest, based on her recommendation, is that you amend your appointments to have the staggered dates as she suggests them. And I recommend that you have the, the appointments of the selectmen and the two chiefs ending the 20, 2026. The police officer and the firefighter ending 2025. And then the citizen yet to be determined and the citizen from the fire department ending the, you know, 2024. And those, she calls them unexpired terms. So she's saying they should be three-year terms. And you've got, you know, the, the, the police officer and the firefighter serving the final two years of a three-year term, unexpired. And likewise, so that's how I would do it, just for simplicity's sake, you know?
Yep.
And that way, the, the main mucky-mucks are serving the three-year, full three years, which would be Richard, Chief Coop and Chief Leard. And that conforms with Diane's recommendation.
So long as I get a plastic badge and a hat.
And a taser?
One for fire, one for police and a hat.
There you go.
Okay. All right, so for motions, do you want me to do them like you do?
I mean, we have to do a motion, I want each, each position?
I think we can do, I can group them. So I will make a motion that we appoint Richard Bremlis as selectman representative, Chief Liam Coop as a police department representative, and Chief Liam Leard as fire department representative to an appointment through June 30th, 2026, as the public safety committee representatives.
I'll second.
Thank you, Matthew. Any further discussion? Seeing now, call for the vote, Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew? I'm sorry, I saw you say Andrew, Matthew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. Sorry, I'm used to the order, like, it's just-
It's my fault, I messed you up.
Back to the corner you go, Matthew.
I should be in the corner. Okay, and then I will make a motion to apor, to appoint Stephen Lacava as a police officer for police department representatives and Joseph Gilbo, I hope I'm saying that right, Gilbo, as the firefighter and the firefighter department representatives through June 30th, 2025. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Roland. Any further discussion? Seeing now, call for the vote, Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye.
You know, I just had a thought. We did have an audience member, we probably could have tried to fill this position. Cut him loose too soon.
That's right.
Cut him loose too soon, Peter.
Bring him back.
Okay, and I will make a motion to appoint Gregory Gomes as citizen on fire department representatives through June 30th, 2024. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Matthew. Any further discussion? Seeing now, now, call for the vote, Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye, okay. All right, so now they're all done exactly the way that Diane wants them to be. Okay.
Good.
So old business, MES water update.
Very old.
Very old business. So water spend, so one other thing, well, I guess, Rich, I'm sorry, I'm Richard.
Forating slip.
Peter, you have something you want to share with us first, before you get into water spend and other things like that?
Uh, so, a couple of things. You, I handed out to you a memorandum of understanding between the town and the town of Uxbridge. I met with Steve Setty, the town manager over there, as well as their DPW gentleman, who's also in charge of their water. And Steve crafted and I edited, and Steve's happy with the edits. Basically, it just says that we're gonna work together to try to get something going on, a municipal water supply from Uxbridge that is broadened in scope for their needs and provides MES water for our needs. And what form that takes and how remains to be seen. And how it's funded remains to be seen. And nothing is a real formal commitment, it's an understanding, and we're gonna work together. And this, I think, will benefit the folks at Mass DEP when they ultimately put their grant out for application. And we have this as a form. And it will also help for federal funding that Uxbridge is trying to seek. And other funding, you know, there's a community compact grant that's gonna go in with us working together with them and so forth. So I guess what I'd be looking for you on this is to authorize me to sign the MOU as currently drafted. And it's loosely drafted, it's not loosely, I mean, I try to be precise on our challenges that we've had over here with the school water and why getting together and getting municipal water supply helps solve those problems. And so that's what I'd be looking for on that, is because, you know, on the water up, so think about that, right? So that's, that's some good news that Uxbridge is ready, willing and reasonably able, subject to their Board of Selectmen and voter approvals, depending on what all, all transpires, right? They may have a SRF funding that they're gonna go through where they borrow money. And I don't know whether we are gonna ultimately go down that road. I, I don't know that there's appetite for that, but that remains to be seen. Or whether we even will need to, based on the way Mass DEP was talking about things in regards to us. As far as the water and like what Richard was talking about in terms of the budget and, you know, can we do, you know, bring in bulk water and all that? The challenge is, bulk water for what period, right? Because right now, this fiscal year, we're dealing with somewhere, we're told, 28 people who are users. And the use, so I had a little, you saw what I asked Richard to try to, Richard Gulick to update us on. He's been traveling and really has little, limited access and was not able to give me too much information back. But I have some limited information, so, you know, I wanted him to talk about or update you all about the challenge of a, you know, a system designed for 600 students, basically, or 600 folks. And he's working with a 28-person or less usage right now. So he, he doesn't know what it was designed for, but he knows that the capacity is, you know, based on the flow rate of the pump, is 8,800 gallons a day of water can be supplied in that system, right? And treated and so forth. The current usage is averaged 135 gallons a day. So there's, you know, it's really a drop in the bucket of what the capability is, which makes it challenging to, so we're, most of that usage was running a hose out the back and back flushing, okay? So there's, there's that. So the short-term need might be, you're saying, to do bulk water that doesn't need to have much take place, right? But that doesn't solve our problem and the real problem of addressing the disinfection byproducts, getting a handle on what we're doing with that system over there, which is still in process, right? Dr. Gulick is trying to, the operators are trying to figure that out. So, and there's so many variables, as you know, there's users, there's what level of, you know, chlorine you put in, what level of all these other things that you're doing and some of the testing results and that. The testing, we do know, there will be violation notices sent out, public notices sent out to the users who are limited at, it's not the school community at this stage. It's the folks in the building, right? And it's gonna be for DBPs for the halooacetic acids, if you remember that, which is not, the, the measurements of those are below the MCL, the maximum contaminant level of Mass DEP. But because of the quarterly averages, we're still in violation, okay? But we do have new trihalomethanes is another disinfection byproduct that we've never had notices before, but starting in the first quarter, they somehow jumped up. And in the second quarter, they jumped up. And in the third quarter testing, they're also exceeding the maximum contaminant level at a lower rate than the first two quarters, but still higher. And Dr. Gulick, one of the world's experts on water, doesn't know why at this stage yet, because it's new information. So there will be a, a public notice on that. He does tell me, I spoke to him briefly before the meeting tonight, that treating for those is a lot simpler, could involve just a bubbler in the storage tank or something. I mean, I'm simplifying it, but it sounds like it's, it's, what's causing it is unknown. How to deal with it, until you really know the cause, you can't really decide how to deal with it. But the, the solutions seem to be more available. But I don't know, we won't know until he's back and got his hands around things. We also have, remote monitoring is in process of being installed there. That will reduce our costs, because we don't have people trucking out there at a, you know, Dr. Gulick level to do, look at dials and look at, you know, screens and so forth. He can remote monitor. So that is in process of being installed. When that is, I don't know yet. And so that's where we're at, at this stage of the game. We did get finally an invoice for the bulk water, and so we'll be paying that. It's a little bit more than the 15 grand, but it's 400 bucks over, so I don't-
We pay the school, we pay the vendor.
We're paying the school.
They paid for this, this is what they bought from the-
So they, you know, they had seven deliveries at 2,200 bucks a pop, comes in at 15,400. So that invoice came in today, and we'll pay that.
2,200 got us what, 3,000 gallons of water?
So it's 20, it, I don't know, the volume, doesn't say that, so I can't tell you.
It's 2,200 times seven deliveries.
So, so a straight truck, class P truck, 30,000 pounds or so, probably be around 3,000 gallons, standard wheel truck, right?
Yeah.
So assuming that, now, you said we're-
It was a tanker, it was 9,000 gallons, though.
So it's a tractor-trailer.[1781.45]
Tractor trailer, yeah.
Yeah, oh yeah.
For twenty two hundred dollars, we had nine thousand, so.
But they need it seven times from May to a month.
So we've, we've expended half the budget this year.
I'm just ballparking.
No, 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 I'm not holding you to this, I'm not holding you to this, and so we've expended half our budget, we say thirty thousand dollars. Trying to double down on a well that's still having chemical issues where they're only using a hundred and thirty five gallons a week for twenty eight people?
A day.
A day, thirty, okay. So why aren't we just killing the system and bringing in tankers of water?
So I think what we have is where we are now and then we're going to, we'll have this memorandum of understanding where we're tapping into Uxbridge. If we knew when that was going to happen, I think we could better predict.
Well, this is two plus years.
So then we're going to be buying water for two years.
Right.
Or if we can get the system working, so I guess I see. When do we think? So I think we maybe want to have like, if the system's not working by this point. We just do bulk water, but I don't know when that is, what do you, like, what do you think?
What I think is we're two months in, two, three months into this fiscal year and we've already expended half the budget. That's what I think, I, I, I think.
I mean, I, I don't, you know, we, we, we had to take over a system that was, uh, you know.
But if they're burning a hundred and thirty five gallons a day. And we can get a tanker for twenty two hundred dollars.
So then the question is, so that, yes, but that, so that, so we're not solving the treatment problem, right?
Why, why would we care if we can do the potable tanks for the next two years and just work towards this goal, then why do we care? I guess that's the question, I just want to see numbers, if it's cheaper to bring in the tanks.
Yeah, I don't know, and I don't know, you know, I don't know what period of time those tanks truly were there, I think we're talking five weeks for that school usage.
Yeah.
So if we do this.
Nine thousand gallon tanker is, is.
Well, that covered you for the year, yeah, based on the usage today, yes, I, I get that, but next year would be a.
When there's students there.
Full boat.
So why wouldn't we just start bringing in the tanks and satisfy the requirement now for the school? And then if we have whatever's left in the budget, see if Dr. Gulick can fix it and if not, hey, we're out of money. I just, I, I see this thing, I don't know, I doubled down and this doesn't make any sense financially. And he's, now he's got chemicals, he doesn't know why they're being caused, that they are.
So I think we maybe want to give him some time to figure it out, because, so I just did some rough and tough math, so if you do a hundred and eighty school days divided by five, that's thirty six weeks.
Right.
And then times, say, we had seven deliveries between May fifteenth and June thirtieth, so that's roughly seventy six.
After May fifteenth, it was after that meeting, it took a few da, a week to get it going.
So if you say it's a delivery a week, which is probably more than that, but a delivery a week is seventy nine thousand two hundred dollars.
Yeah, now I'm talking short term right now, you got a hundred and thirty five gallons a day, right? I mean, you got twenty eight people in there.
So what do you do in the schools then, so then you still.
Well, they're not coming back this year.
But, but in September, so you don't want to get, we either have to get the well working so that we don't, so we just keep it in steady state. Or if we go this tanker, then that's what we're doing forever and it's eighty thousand dollars a year.
I'm, I'm just saying that we should bring in the tankers now to satisfy the twenty eight people. And then whatever residual money we have, if Dr. Gulick can fix it, great, if he can't.
I mean, we're essentially doing that right now, we're giving them bottled water for drinking and cooking that we're paying for. And, and giving Dr. Gulick a chance to try to work on the system.
And he's failed already one quarter and now he doesn't know how to move forward.
So I guess I don't understand, so what do we, so we bring in tanker trucks for the rest of the year, what happens in September?
Probably keep doing it.
So then we spend eighty thousand dollars a year at least on, on bulk water?
Kids have clean water.
Yeah, they do.
But we're already halfway spent in two months in.
So I think that I would rather see, give Dr. Gulick and the team a little bit more of a chance, like to, to steady state this out. And then if we're like, look, we've, we've spent this money, we've given this time, like, I don't think we give them like forever. But if, if, because if we do that and they can fix it.
Right.
Where we spending, once we get the equipment in, the steady state of operating the well, will be a lot less than eighty thousand dollars a year.
Assuming that we can pull it off.
Assuming we can pull it off, but it will be less than that, so I think.
I have no faith in it right now.
So.
I have no faith.
Yeah, I don't, I don't blame you for that, um, it's, it's difficult to see.
I just think that we have a chance to rip the Band-Aid off right now before we hemorrhage fiscal year twenty four. Because fiscal year twenty three, my understanding is we still owe the prior water operator a chunk of money that still has not been paid for whatever reasons. This thing is upside down. And it's going to get worse, so why not rip the Band-Aid off, be done with it at least for this year, bring in the tanks of water. And just.
But how is that different from, we're already paying for the bottled water, I don't understand why a tank of water is different from bottled water.
Then why are we paying the water operator to shut it down? And we can't afford this.
We can afford it a little bit for this year.
Well, we've already expended at least half of it, a couple of months in. We're going to go to the taxpayers and ask them to, at town warrant for more money?
For a town meeting, that's correct.
How much are we going to ask?
Sixty thousand?
Up to sixty thousand, maybe, I don't know, yeah, I don't know.
So I guess.
So I, we don't have a steady state for sure, we had a takeover of the system because it was an emergency, it was taken over and, and. You know, people had to be there and you pay people for their time.
And what about the old bill from fiscal year twenty three from the prior?
That's about to be processed and with disputed amounts, so I've, I've reviewed that, I'm going to be putting that into the town account. Some of it is prior year bills, so it'll be brought before the voters, okay, the bulk of it's prior year bill.
So how much are we talking there?
So I don't want to confuse, let's get to the, the second year bills, but I want to get back to like the bulk water versus fixing the well. So the thing is, we can go bulk water until we get into this memorandum with Uxbridge.
Right.
But that's going to be at least a hundred thousand a year, which will be more than what we're paying to operate the well. So we could, if we make the, if you make the decision, I can honestly, I can, I would prefer to give Dr. Gulick a little bit more time, but I'm only one vote. If everybody else is like, let's just rip the Band-Aid off and go bulk water, we can, but that will be more in the budget for the town than fixing the well and operating a steady state.
The problem with it is, is part of it is the perception, is you're asking to put children back in a building with water that's not passing.
It, well, I wouldn't do that, it would be, have to be passing, have to fix it. So if it's not, so what I'm saying is. Give time to try to fix this, get to a like predictable outcome, which we haven't put in the automation for the remote monitoring yet. And that's two thousand dollars, I mean, out of the whole budget, it's not a lot, so I prefer to see him get in the automation. See how that works, give it some time, if it turns out through that remote monitoring and we're able to get to much more predictability and the, and the testing is more consistent. Great, if we put that in, which is another, like I said, two thousand dollars and we're operating, we're like, you know what, these numbers are still all over the place.
Right.
Sorry, town, we had to shut down the well, we're going to bulk water, it's going to be a hundred thousand a year for the next two years. And in the meantime, we're working into tech, to tap into Uxbridge.
Well, you, you, you did say seventy nine thousand originally, right?
We, so that's assuming, so this is, because, well, I, I did round up for, of the reason that this has seven deliveries between. After the meeting, May fifteenth and June twentieth. That's not a month and they had seven deliveries. So I did roughly one a week, it should probably be more like one and a half a week, so. And we don't know. What do you want to do for the math, so it's twenty two hundred.
No, I'm just asking.
There's thirty six weeks, how many, how many deliveries you thinking we need to make?
It seems like we're pretty well on track to spend that money anyways, doubling down on a well.
So the thing is with the, the repairing of the well is that's done once and then the steady state is just.
Assuming.
Yeah, that's, yes, assuming, we get, so once you get the well working once, the steady state is much less than twenty two hundred dollars a week, way less.
And, and this is from the professional that we had in, we saw eighty nine slides, it was positive and that next quarter failed. And he's now uncertain with the chemical makeup.
If you want to go to the town and we say we were going to shut down the well and we're going to spend at least a hundred thousand a year on bulk water, we can do that.
I'm just, I, I'm just bringing it up and making it a matter of record, I think.
Is that what you would like to do, Rich, do you want to shut down the well and spend a hundred thousand dollars a year, start with bulk water, starting fiscal year next year?
Children clean water and at this point and say.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm thinking it, it's, it's looking that way.
Okay.
We probably should have put that in the survey, honestly.
We didn't send the survey yet, so we could.
I think we should. Do we spend a hundred and shut down the well or, and ask for a, an increase, can we do, I mean, can we do an override? I mean, do we, do we talk about that, do we not?
So we can't talk about an override, I can tell you that people don't like talking about override, but we can talk about an override.
If it talks about giving kids clean water, I'm sure they will.
Okay. So. Well, I guess, what is everybody, I, on, it's, that's the decision, I can, I. I'm okay spending, shutting down the well and spending a hundred thousand dollars on bulk water, I just want to make sure everybody is where, like, we still could fix this. Like, I do think we have really good people in place. But everyone's like, I'm not comfortable, I just want to do the, this is the safer bet, just to, the bulk water, it's more expensive, but it's safer.
I mean, if we, if we gave him and extended his deadline to, to Thanksgiving.
Well, the next, the next quarter wouldn't be until after what, January first?
Okay, so extended to Christmas vacation.
End of the year.
Oh, I'm sorry, winter break.
End of the calendar year.
Winter break.
Not allowed to call it Christmas vacation.
I call it Christmas vacation, I don't think, I don't think people care.
But I call it what it is, Christmas, so, well, Christmas vacation, if it's still failing, the quarterly test.
Done, okay.
Then January one, or whenever they go back to school.
When will we get the automation system in?
I, I can't tell you precisely, but the, the guy that's putting it in was in there today.
Okay.
So he's working on it, whether, you know, what his installation period is, I don't know.
Okay. Because then, so say he installs it by October fifteenth, we would give them two months of steady state on the automation system to try to fix things.
And keep in mind, the violation notices are based on the core, the running four quarter averages, so. Some of these, even if the water is pristine and all the, all of the readings and tests are below. You're still going to have violation notices because of the quarterly average, but you at least would know that it's below the threshold.
But we still haven't had a clean quarter yet, that's.
No, I understand.
I mean, I understand it's going to take at least two quarters to pull up the town and, and get out from that, yeah, yeah, I understand that, yeah.
Yeah.
But you want to see, like, at least through, say, Christmas vacation, that you want to see. That those readings have been, even though the notice might still go out, the readings are clear, okay?
And I think, and I think that's consistent with the general commitment, I think, to the school leadership that we were trying to know. By the beginning of next year, so they can make their decisions, so you're at a point where it's a decision.
Yep.
To go no-go with the system, right? Or solution B or C.
Okay.
Right.
That's, that seems fair.
Now we have here to the uptown, I keep saying uptown, the Uxbridge solution, I said uptown, Uxbridge. And we just need to figure out like how to get there, like what's, how do we get there, we're here, we're here.
One more thing, I know that, I've mentioned this briefly, does the school have any interest in doing another MOU where they take ownership of the well? Would they have any interest in trying to fix this for the town of Blackstone, we simply pay them? Or give them credits against their.
I'm not sure I follow the, I'm sorry, I don't follow, we're talking about, this is with Uxbridge.
No, 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 we do another one of these for the well and we let the school system take ownership of it and that.
I don't think they have any interest in that at all.
Well, they did it before and that's why I'm suggesting that.
Because, I mean, at the meeting we went to August thirty first, you know, um, Chair Bernako said, you know, we wasted forty five minutes talking about water, we should be talking about educating students. It was, I'm, that's not word for word, but it's, it was that general gist, I don't, so, what do you?
No, I was thinking that if you want to double down on the well, that maybe we do another MOU with the school districts and say, look, you know, we apparently don't have anybody qualified that can turn this thing around. You give it a crack.
Think that's what accomplished, and I think, we do have qualified people working on the well right now.
I got a question about the bulk water, is so, is there, there's not a fixed cost per delivery on the water, right, it's just variable?
No, I think it's pretty, you can do a fixed cost, yeah.
So I'm just thinking, yeah, so I'm just thinking in the future, let's say, whatever the amount per gallon is per delivery, like, you know, interest rates and. Economy's terrible, everything's getting more expensive.
Gasoline, diesel.
Yeah, so what, like, if it's unpredictable.
Sign a contract.
If we, yeah, can we do a contract? I think that we could do that, if we say, look, we're going to buy water for the next two years, can we have a favorable price?
That way we both assume the risk and.
That's a great idea.
RFP or RFQ.
That's a great idea, Matthew, if we go bulk water.
Yeah, and, and, but keep in mind, the current unknown is what the student population would be next year, right? And I'm sure we'd learn that from school leadership, they know which grades are actually going to go in there, because there was talk of. One of the grades that moved over, not coming back and then going back over to.
So it'd be low.
So it'd be smaller next year.
Intermediate and then go back up the year after, okay, okay, so that.
Might work in our favor on the bulk water.
For the first year.
One year, assuming that Uxbridge thing or something like that can take place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe it's direct to eighty thousand.
Really, I mean, I'm, I'm sure everyone's goals are same that in, in June, Dr. DeFalco was able to send the letter. That all the kids will be going back to normal positions.
Yeah, but we wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't really know more about that until January.
Right.
This is the right word, yeah.
It's not going to be cheap, the question just asked.
On this MOU, Peter, do, I mean, do we have any money for a project manager to at least develop some sort of scope of work?
I think we have the engineer for that.
And maybe do.
Well, we have engineering money, right, so thi- this is really just trying to get people to be holding hands, let's, let's work together, that's all this, this really is. This isn't spending money, right? And they're the ones doing most of the engineering, next door, yes.
Okay.
But I did mention as a disclosure, in, in fairness of being a good neighbor, that you all had approved twenty five grand of ARPA money.
That's right.
For engineering, so it's a bit of a resource, should it be needed by them to engineer this. So for example, one of the conversations was the question of, uh, like, remember I mentioned the survey that went into Mass DEP that we had submitted? And it described a two inch pipe from a neighboring town. The uh, DEP head over there who manages their water supply said. It's probably not going to be sufficient, it needs to be an eight inch pipe and that's a larger cost item. But again, that's because they're thinking of what the flow is, it's got to come up the hill and then come over and so forth, so. It's better that they engineer it, but it, we're working together because we're sol, our solving our problem helps them solve their problem at the same time.
Right, and of course, whether or not you're going to put fire suppression, fire hydrants, things of that nature.
Yeah, and that's a supplemental.
But you want to build.
All I'm, all, all, all this focuses on solving is the MES water, which is also mass DEP, so the ma, what. The town does in relation to January first may be influenced also by. Keeping mass DEP in the game and supportive of what we're trying to do. And whether the bulk water solution helps or hinders that, I can't say, but it's, it's worth considering at the time.
Yep.
Right?
We should, yeah, we should make sure that mass DEP is.
On board with this, yes.
On board with that bulk water.
Yeah, so.
I don't, can't imagine that they wouldn't be, but I don't.
And they have their requirements of certain, as you recall, poor Jay, Dr. DeFalco having to stop the delivery of the truck because mass DEP required certain. Steps to be done before they were to prove the bulk water solution for that period of time.
There's a chain of custody and the invoice.
Yes, all that, that's correct, it had to be one of their authorized vendors, there are three of them, basically.
Which is off of their, past the price agreement.
That's correct.
Right, okay, that, that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so it sounds like we are okay giving the water team through Christmas break to. Get the water in compliance, if not, then we should, we will move forward with bulk water. Um, and. Peter, you and I should maybe talk with mass DEP and say, this is what our plan is and, and see if there's any concern, then we can update everybody next week, okay?
Yep.
Great, okay. Um, alright, so for the memorandum, I'm just going to read it and make sure we all agree, so this is a memorandum of understanding between the towns of Uxbridge and Millville to provide water services to the Millville Elementary School. Whereas the towns of Uxbridge and Millville have a longstanding working relationship in many areas. I would like to expand that to include providing municipal water from Uxbridge to the Millville Elementary School and. Whereas the town of Millville has been informed that on recent water tests at the elementary school, the system has violated mass DEP disinfection byproduct. DBP, minimum contaminant levels, MCLs for HA, HAA five and TTHM. And its PFAS testing results averaging fourteen point six parts per trillion are expected to exceed the proposed EPA limits. And whereas the town of Uxbridge and Millville have recently met to discuss a collaboration to provide a solution to these problems. As well as to provide better quality water and better water pressure to Kempton Road slash East Street area. That would include a governor's community compact grant application, mass DEP grant funding, federal grant assistance. SRF funding and other sources to be determined to study and pay for the improvements. Now therefore be it known that the two towns look to formalize this agreement in this memorandum of understanding. So that these problems can be remediated and Millville students can return to their elementary school and the residents of Kempton Road and East Street. Can improve their water pressure and water quality problems. So I'll make a motion that we authorize Peter Caruso as a town administrator to enter into this memorandum. to enter into this memorandum of understanding with the town of Uxbridge. Looking for a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? We didn't really talk about the memorandum of understanding too much. It seems to be fairly, I think it's, it's specific, but high level enough that we can.
Yeah.
Yeah. So any, so no changes or anything?
Do you think you'll be utilizing any of that money for engineering, possibly, in the, in the discussion of this MOU?
We may. So, well, I, you know, I put it on the table as a possible resource. Didn't give it away.
Right now, I would not give it away, no, no.
It may be available.
Buy a hat, and then put it under your hat.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
You know, you're becoming a hell of a water official.
And I can't wait till we're hooked up to somebody else's water supply.
I know. That's my, day of my dreams.
Hey, MWRA may be hiring, I don't know.
There you go. No, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And then, anything you mentioned, I don't know, sorry, I'm just trying to make sure I keep things straight. So we talked about short-term, long-term, I guess, short-term, intermediate, super-long-term. And then, Richard, you were asking Peter questions about bills and things we need to appropriate for, um, the warrant. So I wanted to make sure we closed on one topic before I moved on, so I wanted to give you the opportunity to bring that, those questions back up.
No, I'm, I'm done, I pretty much nailed them. The questions I had about water, right?
Yeah. You have anything else around bills, or, okay?
Um, no, my concern is, is whether or not we're going to go over budget and whether it's worth it, that's.
Yeah.
Pretty much where I'm going with it.
Yep.
Kind of black and white.
Okay. All right. So then we have the BMR open meeting law complaint response discussion and possible resolution. So, um, we got a response to the open meeting law violation from the school committee. Um, sorry, from Dr. DeFalco specifically. So I guess, um, I have two opinions on this. I, I mean, the open meeting law exists to ensure there's proper participation and communication so that the community can be well-informed. And in my opinion, that was not done properly. However, no one in Millville really seems to be in uproar over this. So, I'm not sure we wanna take on the headache. Cause if, you know, we did this for the, you know, we, cause I thought maybe people in the community might have wanted to have more of an opportunity to comment, or discuss, or vote, or email. Um, so I think we still have a couple weeks before, you know, I think it expires on September thirteenth. Those when we get the response. So thirty days from then, if we want to escalate. Um, but I guess unless I hear some, some big wave from the community, I don't know that we really wanna do that.
My understanding from public opinion is that they're not so concerned with that as they are with the clumsiness of the water, the children. That's the perception, whether it's right, wrong, or indifferent, that's the perception. It's not.
That's the same.
It's not based on chemistry, it's not based, it's, yeah, that's the, if it's not clean, the superintendent says that, then that's what the public believes, and that's what the parents believe, so.
Okay.
Fix the issue, that's what they want.
All right. So I don't think we need to take a vote or anything, we can just let this.
Leave it, leave it be.
All right, sounds good. Um, okay, you know what, one thing, Peter, that you and I discussed earlier, uh, maybe we make it an agenda item on the next meeting, around water operational costs and the water depression we had earlier.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do that. Okay, so lifted luxury host community agreement expiration update and discussion. So I'm sure Andrew wishes he was not, he was feeling well tonight, so you could be here to be like, I told you! Because, Andrew.
He would.
Andrew, you were right.
Yep.
We were all wrong. Or I was wrong. I don't know who was here when we voted to extend, but I was wrong, Andrew was right. Um, so, what's going on is the lifted luxury doesn't have a base of operations, is that correct?
That's right. So, from what I understand, lifted luxury is, uh, yeah, the, the board, almost a year ago, so some of you weren't on the board, extended the existing host community agreement with lifted, lifted luxury through dis- uh, I'm sorry, October eighth of this year, which is the anniversary date of when the host community agreement was first signed uh, by the town with them, um, in two thousand twenty. Um, and they've made some of the payments in, under the host community agreement, which were advanced payments against the impact fees of three percent of their sales. But they never got to the point of, of final, uh, fit-up of the site, nor did they get to the point of Cannabis Control Commission granting them a license to operate, you know, a retail and a manufacturing and a grow operation, which were the three legs of the host community agreement that the town has with them. Since then, the Cannabis Control Commission has changed the way one can enter into, or what, what the terms of host community agreements can include specifically regarding impact fees. So the impact fees on new agreements require that you must document the actual costs incurred, incremental costs incurred, you can get those as impact fees, but you can't get the three percent straight on sales that we currently had in the agreement with them, okay? So the, that was one of the reasons for extending the agreement, thinking that they were going to be able to get up and running by October eighth. And they had, at the time, an investor ready with, and there she, I saw a copy of a term sheet, which had a significant investment being put into lifted luxury. That investment apparently wasn't made, some modest amounts were put in, such that they paid us some delinquent quarterly payments required under the existing host community agreement. Under that agreement, we keep all of the payments that have been made regardless. And that's somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty thousand dollars, okay? So here we are today, um, from what I understand, from good sources, reputable sources, that lifted luxury as a tenant in the building has been, uh, is no longer a tenant. You see, uh, the back and forth I had a little bit with, uh, Principal of, uh, Lifted Luxury, who's still, uh, in- intends to purchase the building, subject to having the host community agreement, or not, I guess. Uh, but the money is, you know, money talks, and you know what, walks. The money is not in the bank, okay? For her. So, if you, so you also have a landlord who owns the building that had, had a substantial amount of fit-up, including, uh, National Grid bringing in three-phase power to the building in anticipation of its use, that was gonna be there, okay? And so, there's a landlord and a National Grid whose objectives or expectations aren't being met currently. And so, if the town were not to extend this, if you all were to decide not to extend this, you would then be dealing with a nu- maybe a new person, but the financial, uh, benefits of a new host community agreement are limited or, or less than limited, uh, at best. So you may wind up deciding that, uh, at least on a purely grow operation, where there's no financial benefit, other than there's a facility that maybe has taxes being paid, but where it's a landlord, the landlord pays those anyway to the town, right? For that building, not the, you know, whether they have a tenant or not, they still gotta pay the taxes on the property.
Yeah, I think we would only go with a retail operation.
So retail is really the only way to go, cause you get the three percent additional sales tax. That's the financial benefit, and you're not necessarily dealing with some of the other disadvantages of a grow operation, which can be, you know, pure and simple to smell.
So I have one question. You know, are we at, in jeopardy of losing any kind of a host agreement license? If this thing lingers, is the state gonna pull it back, or we?
No, we get to.
We have it, we're locked in. We don't have to use it until somebody comes, I mean.
You, no, you, so Millville, it's in a zo- it's a zoning bylaw.
Right.
Millville has two retail licenses in its zoning bylaws. One is already gone for garden wonders.
Okay.
One retail license is gone for here. Millville also has unlimited licenses available under its zoning bylaws for grow operations, just call it grow, which is cultivation and manufacturing.
Not for retail.
But not for retail, only the two, okay?
Right.
And so here, what happens, if you don't extend this, you now have a retail license availability, should somebody wanna do that. You're currently not restricted on grow, other than does it make business sense, or good sense for the community? Cause there's no financial sense on any new deals for a grow only.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we're not in jeopardy of losing the retail license.
No. And so, the other part is, are you, you know, it does leave a landlord with a site that has been partially fit up, or substantially fit up, for a specific purpose of a functioning, which may never get fulfilled, depending on what happens. Do you see what I'm saying?
If a community, for some reason, can't fulfill one of these retail licenses, does the state allow a community to sell it to a neighboring community if they have a need?
I have no idea on that.
I, I didn't expect you to answer it, but it's just a kind of an idea.
I think it's a zoning thing. Yeah, the town could change the zoning bylaws and say, we want five retail licenses.
So maybe I'm, I'm misunderstanding, and I thought that the state had a cap on the amount of retail businesses and that each.
That I'm not aware of, that I'm not aware of.
That's kinda where I'm getting it. I, I, I thought that was the case.
Okay.
So maybe I'm wrong. I could be wrong.
Can we ask council?
Yeah.
It seems like some towns have no cap. Cause everywhere you look, there's cannabis.
There's cannabis everywhere, yeah.
Yes.
So if it's just a zoning bylaw, then it doesn't really matter, but I, I just, I thought there was a, I thought the state had a number, a cap.
Yeah.
Yeah, I gotcha.
Okay. We'll figure that out.
Yep. And you see, I have some questions for council, too, in terms of advice. So you, you do have until, if you didn't wanna make a final decision today on extension or not, right?
Yep.
Maybe, maybe you're ready to do that.
Yeah.
Uh, you, you have till next week, should, because I don't think the town is in any real legal exposure for any actions it's taken regarding this particular, uh, entity.
No, it seems like the, uh, it's all in the building owner.
Yeah. You've been generous with extensions.
Unfortunately, the building owner is on the hook for taxes and, uh, you know.
That's right.
It is what it is, but, uh, no on us, on us, yeah. Makes sense.
I was gonna move on unless there's anything else? Actually, I did wanna come back to one more water thing. So we got, we authorized fifteen thousand dollars on May fifteenth, um, to do all the deliveries for the whole school year. It was actually fourteen thousand four hundred dollars. So, Peter, do I?
Fifteen thousand four hundred.
Yeah, fifteen thousand four hundred dollars.
Four hundred bucks more than you authorized.
Do you want us to au- do we need to vote for you to authorize extra four hundred? I think we should vote to authorize extra four hundred dollars, because not voting has gotten me into precarious situations in the past.
And you're gonna wanna put that in fiscal year twenty-three, or you're gonna put that in twenty-four?
It's, it's ARPA money, so it really doesn't impact the fiscal year.
Fair enough.
Okay. So I will make a motion that we increase the, um, water reimbursement by four hundred dollars to bring it to a total of fifteen thousand four hundred dollars payable to the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Richard. Super fast.
That's right, Matthew.
I could tell you what's going in here.
Like a flash. Ninja, selectmen ninja.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Aye. All right, there. That's voted, and everyone, no one can say boo about anything, it's all done. Okay. Departments?
Nothing.
Public forum? Thank you for being here with us. Some announcements, if any?
Uh, no, I don't have any announcements, uh, to update you at this stage of the game for library or senior center, but I would urge you to look for those on, on Facebook and so forth, right?
Okay.
Quick thing on departments, where we can just back up for a quick moment.
Sure, of course.
If, if a resident needs to call for services, is there any centralized point or formal focal point for complaints? I mean, I understand we have, uh, you know, the Board of Health, and we have, I'm gonna go back to the whole rooster thing, the whole rooster thing, listen.
I am the complaint guy.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I, 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 I don't know, I just see this thing going down a rabbit hole where somebody posts.
What's the complaint with roosters? What is the issue, someone has one?
Somebody posts anonymously on a Facebook gro- group, the, the ACO chimes in, probably the right thing to do, you know, he, he's on it. But, but how do you prioritize it? How do you pick and choose what to respond when it's coming through that informal channel? There's no.
Yeah, so that's an excellent point. I don't, so, Facebook is not a official point.
No.
It's not. So like, that's why, so, so sometimes we'll see things, sometimes if I'm like, gee, that's a good thing, we should address this in a meeting, but other things, we don't. If you really want something to be addressed in a board or selectman meeting, and you have a complaint about roosters, you have a complaint about a neighbor, or any issues, they should all go to Peter as a town administrator, and he will say, this goes to the animal control officer, this is for the building commissioner, this is for the board of health. So, and to ensure follow-up, that is the best thing you can do, is to contact Peter. So call the main number at the town hall, they'll give, they'll take a message, you can email him at townadmin@millvilleMA.org. I won't give you his cell phone number, cause he'll kill me, but, um, like, that you, definitely, that's how people should do it. So, Richard, over to you.
In the past, if you had an ACO issue, you had an animal control issue, you had a rabid fox in your yard, you'd call the police department, police department would dispatch ACO, there's a call log created, maybe a follow-up report if needed. And there was a formal channel of communication. And so what I'm seeing now is we're seeing, and some residents have brought it up to my attention, they're saying, hey, listen, I, I've reached out, my concern didn't get addressed. But then as a Facebook post and somebody else concerned, how does that get vetted? And I'm saying, well, I, I understand.
I don't know.
We have a regional agreement now.
We do.
There should be a main phone number to call for, for animal complaints. So is it Uxbridge PD? Is it Millville PD? It's Uxbridge PD.
Yeah.
Maybe we need to make that known, cause I, I think people are getting confused about that. In the past, it was Millville PD, so.
But Millville will pitch it, like, they know.
Yeah, so, uh, but at the same time, Chief Coop is part of the advisory committee of the regional ACO. So if, if it goes there, it'll get there. If it comes to me, I'll, I'll send it over to Montmanee, you know, Chief Montmanee.
So, for legality purposes, I just, you know, I don't like seeing informal chains of communication. I like to see call logs, I like to see reports, I like to see.
I agree.
Cause then if the same rooster has complained about three, four times, now we have an official record.
Yes.
Where, where these unofficial things are taken backdoor, and somebody's, you know, I, I don't like, it's messy. So, I don't know, just, just me.
So we won't get into the specifics of roosters, cause it does involve board of health and so forth. So sometimes that, but, and i- i- in the beginning, yes, I'm the point person, under your bylaws for complaints, I'm obligated to investigate, but I don't investigate if there's no complaint. And I, I may see something on Facebook, so I'm aware of it, but it, it's not official, unless it comes in as official, right?
Yeah, and I'm concerned that somebody may or may not act in an official capacity when not directed to do so by the town administrator.
Yeah. And I don't have control over animal control officer, cause it's controlled by Uxbridge at this stage.
And of course, you know, this concern of legality reasons and safety reasons. Cause if you have somebody who's dispatched themselves, and they get injured, we don't really know about it.
Right.
So, I just wanted to mention that, I'm off it now.
Yeah, no, that's helpful.
I don't have any pet roosters, I promise.
I don't have roosters.
Well. Yeah, I mean, I, I used to have them, I don't have time right now, and, uh, even the ones that identify as hens, I don't have any of those. I have no time.
Any correspondence, Peter?
Uh, actually, I did get something. Uh, it was an invite that I, I might have sent you, or you may have gotten directly for a BVT regional, uh, budget, the BVT Regional Vocational School Budget Conversation. And it's an invitation from the town administrator on behalf of the Board of Selectment of Hope Dale um, to talk about, uh, it's a summit on October twenty-sixth. So I'll forward you that, that correspondence. It just came in today. Where they're gonna engage in a district-wide conversation about individual and collective community needs as described uh, regarding the BVT, and really talks about budgeting and capital needs and so forth. So, I'll send that to you, and you can, you know, maybe put that on a future agenda, or decide individually if it's something you're interested in attending, or learning more about. And, oh, I have copies of them here. Yeah. And it's got a weird, I asked it to staple the copier, and it did that little do-icky, cause it's a two-pager.
Okay. I have a couple. Okay, and next is meeting minutes for May 1st. So on the first page, Andrew is not the vice president, he is the vice chair.
Very good.
Can we, can we vote on him without him?
I know, I feel like.
He's a new vice president, oh no, that's only in Washington.
Can we vote on this without him here, or?
I know, I feel like, we can, but Andrew is like the eagle eye editor, so if we, do you want to wait for Andrew?
Well, yeah, because if you find something wrong, he's not going to be happy.
Okay, all right, we will wait to.
Okay, good, and next meeting should have the May 15th one.
Okay, got it, we can do those together. All right, and then you can, let, should you make this update, or whoever does, I'm going to make this update.
Yeah, I'll do that.
So, does Sherry do the meeting minutes?
No, so, I have, uh, we, we now have Dylan Lindholm, our junior planner, doing these, and has done a good job, but there, there's some catch-up to do.
Okay, well, when they do the updates, then we can, we can vote.
Well, I usually make the edits.
Oh, okay.
So I take what's first draft and then I do the edits, so I obviously miss that.
Okay, sounds good. Selectment reports, Roland, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Richard?
No.
Really? I thought you could have something.
I had a lot of stuff tonight, but you know, uh, you know, I think. No, I think we've pretty well covered it, I think I beat up Peter again and, uh.
No.
I didn't beat up Peter at all.
Peter loves talking to you.
Million questions about water.
So, no, we should definitely, I think having a more structured timeline in place is not bad at all. I think that was a great discussion, I'm glad you brought it up. Don't feel like, don't.
No.
I want all of us to be more engaged, like, for so many meetings, they were me talking. Joey meetings were like that, a billion, maybe not a billion, but many, many, many meetings, and I would even do this, I'd be like, "So I have opinions, but I'll quiet, be quiet and let other people go first," and I'd, and I'd wait like thirty-five seconds. Like, okay, well, my opinion.
No.
So, no, I'm glad to have this, I don't have to be the one.
I follow you on that, because I, I remember when I was chair, oh my word, sometimes it was like.
Talking to the wall.
The Roland Show? I know, no, so I'm happy to have the discussion on, on any topic.
The only thing we got pending is, uh, the town warrant needs to get posted at some point, right?
Correct.
By the constable.
So you're going to be seeing a draft next week, and then the following week, you're going to finalize.
Doesn't have to be me, I just don't want it last minute.
So, well, if the warrant closes on Wednesday, we should probably finalize it on the second, because the next date that we have a meeting would be the.
Yeah, it's before the, so you have a meeting on the 16th?
Is that okay?
Yeah, and the warrant has to be posted by the 18th.
Okay.
So, it'll be a final draft, so you, you may make recommendations next week, even.
Yep.
Yeah, I think if we, if we could finalize it next week, that would be amazing.
Yep, it would be amazing.
Okay. Yeah, all right, great. Matthew, do you have a selectman reports?
I do not.
I don't have anything either, and the town administrator?
So, I only have one topic to talk about, you know, I get visited by Chief Coop quite often, and today he came in and he was well-rested, and I was happy to see that, because a week ago, he was not well-rested, and that's because there was a significant event, which you saw something on Facebook, you saw a press release go up, so I just want to mention briefly, so I sent, uh, you all a, a brief description of that event, and I wanted to read some of the highlights of what I sent you all, because I think it merits some mentioning here, because Millville PD stepped into action in a big way, um, a, a week, late at night. I got the call from the chief who was on-site, I think he was dodging certain fire at the time, uh, late at night, uh, last Sunday night, a week ago Sunday, and he was there till wee hours in the morning, then all morning through the morning. But they're, they had a police action late Sunday night and early morning on Chestnut Hill Road. What started as a domestic disturbance incident turned into an individual who was armed and dangerous, right? And if you read the press release, you'd see that, but thanks to Chief Coop and Sergeant Sullivan, Sergeant Sullivan was the gentleman, the police officer on duty and first on scene. He brought in a mutual aid, two officers from Blackstone came in, two officers from Mendon came in, so there were six local police officers, chief showed up, and it was really Chief Coop and Sergeant Sullivan who were really leading the charge of what was to be done there, and what was to be done there was frankly, uh, restraint in this situation, okay? I think that, that's really the key here. State police arrived as well as the regional SWAT, central regional SWAT, and they come with this armored truck, and I think there were fifty of them in full tactical gear, you know, night vision, all that. And in a situation like that, particularly where there were shots fired by the individual in question, you know, it could wind up where one person gets an itchy trigger finger, and next thing you know, there's hundreds of rounds into a place and somebody's dead.
Right.
That didn't happen, because there was professionalism and great restraint, and I think that's what I call professionalism, professionalism, restraint, patience by our local public safety folks, and those who responded resulted in no injuries, rather than what could have been a tragic outcome, okay? So these situations certainly don't occur every day, they certainly don't occur in little old sleepy Millville. So I'm totally amazed at the performance of Chief Coop, Sergeant Sullivan, the folks from Mendon, the folks from, you know, Blackstone, and of course, all the folks from the state agencies and so forth, it just, it's incredible that they got the person to surrender and be dealt with in the proper manner, both in terms of evaluation and so forth, and now it's in the, you know, the DA's handling the situations, but, uh, that could have been a very ugly situation.
Yeah.
Just for a matter of public record, this is the second shooting incident we've had this year?
Yes.
Unrelated.
Unrelated.
Same area.
Same area.
Same street, yes.
Unrelated, and so, uh, I know the chief and I had chatted briefly, and he wanted to make that a point, so that the residents here know that the department could use all the help and resources it needs, because this is the second shooting incident this year.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's becoming more prevalent, hopefully doesn't, but.
Well, you mentioned override, that's the only real way to significantly increase that budget right now.
Well, I know.
They are, they're increasing like two percent a year, because that's all we have to give.
Chief and I have had some very candid conversations, and I think we've made some headway, uh, I do have some materials to share, and of course, once we get the Public Safety Committee together, and I come in and get sworn in, I don't know if everybody else has been or not, I know we had that conversation this past week, we'll be able to kind of move in a direction, and, uh, I've shared some of my thoughts, so, I think, uh, you know, we'll, we'll get some value out of it.
Yeah.
For sure, for sure.
Key, yeah.
You know, even utilizing the existing budget, I know they were sixty-five percent expended last year. There was some savings.
There were, there were savings due to lack of personnel, quite frankly.
Not exactly intentional.
That's right.
Right? But, there's some opportunity.
Yes.
There's some opportunity, so we, we've had those discussions, and I'm, I'm very happy, I think we can do something.
Yep.
So.
But, but, so I'll, I'll probably send a note to the, uh, two chiefs, Mendon and Blackstone, just to say they did a great job and thanks, you know, their team really stepped up.
Should we possibly acknowledge any of the other staff that were in that?
I think, I think, you know, if there were some, I don't know what medal, you know, what sort of little trinkets or something, but at least a recognition and a certificate.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be great coming from you all.
I think that would be appropriate, yeah.
It was incredible, incredible performance.
And we can invite them in to a meeting?
Yeah.
I think we should.
Okay.
Yeah, good.
So I guess the town clerk will.
Do her fancy seal thingy and.
Yes.
I'll help her draft up some sort of something or other.
Okay. All right, items not easily anticipated for you, I'll try.
Nope.
So our next regular meeting is a week from today, Monday, October 2nd. Okay, and, here we go.
And no need for the executive session tonight.
Okay.
Okay, because I don't, I, I did get something back, just, you know, just before the meeting from the union, so I sent you what I sent.
That's the other thing that is kind of in the back of my mind, as you negotiate with those folks, you know, what do we do, and that'll determine, I guess, when we start with the Public Safety Committee, because I don't necessarily want to make promises in that committee that you haven't fulfilled and, or made
Correct.
in their contract, so, that's the other piece of it.
Yeah, so you'll be, yeah, next week, you'll have an executive session.
Okay.
We'll get into the details on that.
Okay, sounds good.
That's fair.
What we sent as a town and what they came back with.
And I, I think the chief has been in communication with you, some of our, our communications, so you can keep that in the back of your mind as you're negotiating.
Yep, yep.
That may be some opportunities, yeah.
Yep.
All right, so I will make a motion to adjourn our meeting at eight forty PM, looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Roland, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you, everyone, and we finished in one hour and thirty minutes.